Six o'clock. Thank you all for coming here at the city council meeting on the 24th. We're pinked out tonight for honor of breast cancer month and hopefully if you haven't pinked out yourself, hopefully you will before the month is over and you can recognize and celebrate with us. I'm gonna ask for everybody to please stand for an invitation, a pledge of allegiance. Let's bow our heads. Oh heavenly Father, the recent storm Irma has left so many in our state in need. Please care for them as they rebuild their lives and their communities. Watch over those who have volunteered their time and energy to help their neighbors. We thank you, Lord, for the fine men and women who served this city. They have shown us that we are truly blessed with caring and dedicated employees who work tirelessly to keep us safe and secure. As we show our support for those who have faced breast cancer this evening, dear Lord, please know that we love and care for them all and seek your hand in guiding us to a lasting cure. For us in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marie, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Here.
Councilmember Mattelli?
Here.
Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Lorenz?
Here.
Mayor Protem Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Kinghorn?
Yabba dabba doo.
Councilmember Rice?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Mayor Cronin?
Present.
Administrator Tucker?
Here.
Attorney Havers?
Here.
Well, thank you all for showing up. It is a fine time to be in the Isle of Palms in our secret season. Next item on our general reading of journals at previous meetings, you have the special meeting of August 22nd and September 26th. A motion to approve?
Second.
Any amendments, corrections, deletions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Citizens comments. See on my note here that Shane wants to speak to us. Maybe others too.
Thank you, council. My name's Shane Ziegler. My wife Morgan and I live in Mount Pleasant with our three kids and here to speak tonight about the Marina Enhancement, owner of Barrier Island Eko Tours, which we started in 1997. At that time, I was living on Isle of Palms. My family and I moved to Isle of Palms in 1987 and were very involved in the community. My mother was water commissioner and head of the rebuilding committee for Sunrise Presbyterian Church. And I just, I still have, even though I don't live here anymore, I've had a business here for 20 years and my wife and kids and I, we love the Isle of Palms and just still feel deeply rooted to this community. Still have lots of friends here. And I started, I'm just gonna read this so I can kinda get through it a little quicker, I apologize, but I started Barrier Island Eko Tours in 1997 because I felt visitors, schoolchildren, and many locals were missing out on what I considered the best part of living here, which is exploring the salt marshes. And so, the mission of our business is to teach people about our salt marshes in Barrier Island so they will gain a greater appreciation of its significance and in turn, respect and enjoy it responsibly. I would like to thank the current administration for coming up with this Marina Enhancement Plan. I know it's gone through a lot of different stages and I think what it's gotten it to now addresses all the key issues. I feel it's very resident friendly. It definitely will benefit the businesses because it's gonna be a beautiful place to visit, but really for my business, monetarily, it's not really gonna increase revenue. Hopefully it will some, but it's more, people are gonna come regardless whether this renovation goes on or not. They're still gonna come. And I just wanna talk a little bit about the businesses at the Marina. They're run by mature, responsible owners. And we're limited in growth because of the limited dockage and parking. The new dock layout does not allow for any additional commercial boats, including Barrier Island Eko Tours. The new docks and parking lot does not benefit my business, like I was saying, monetarily. It will however, ensure customers, with the majority being schoolchildren and families, have defined parking and safe passage to our boats in the parking lot and on the docks. The activities offered by the businesses at the Isle of Palms Marina make the Isle of Palms a more desirable place to live and to visit. Many people choose to stay on the Isle of Palms or return year after year because of the many water activities Isle of Palms Marina has to offer. Barrier Island Eko Tours and Coastal Expeditions, for example, offer intensive, highly educational trips. Many schools statewide have integrated our programs into their curriculum, returning year after year, providing their students with a hands-on experience that brings the classroom to life. The Marina hosts some of the top fishing guides in the southeast and people will stay on the Isle of Palms year after year just to fish with a certain fishing guide. Same thing, they come, we have families, Chris Coastal Expedition, people with Titleway, they come because of these activities at the Marina. People have, their families, we have families that have been coming with us for, since we began business and with the big boat in 98. Still have the same families coming. So, why not put the tourist dollars into beautifying, maintaining, and protecting what is, I would say, is the city's number one asset? It's unlikely money is gonna get cheaper to borrow. It's unlikely that the cost to build and renovate is gonna go down. So, as the city's asset continues to deteriorate, the cost of repair is likely to increase, not to mention the cost of a lawsuit when someone gets hurt. One of the main issues with the Marina is, as I know you guys are aware of, is the unsafe flow of the parking lot. Currently, we witness this every day. I have my employee over here, Robbie, just almost saw his child get run over in the parking lot the other day. Somebody else, an employee at Marina, saw the same thing happen with another kid. With everybody coming in and out of the same entrance, you got buses, boat trailers, you know pedestrians, bikers, everybody whipping in there. And that one entrance, eventually somebody's gonna get smashed right there. And then, this may cost the city much more than 5.5 million. And then the docks are another safety hazard. Constantly nails popping up, bores becoming uneven, tripping hazard. They're over 30 years old, disrepair. And it's a documented fact, so that makes an easy lawsuit for when somebody gets injured. And the Band-Aids that Brian and the city have been putting, have been applying are no longer effective. Contrary to what many residents believe, the enhancement benefits the residents of Isle of Palms far more than the businesses. I remember 30 years ago, as a kid, living on the Isle of Palms and having a hard time finding a place to get out to the salt marsh to go fishing and crabbing. And now, it's pretty much impossible unless you trespass. And this gives forever public access to the salt marsh, a dock on the waterway dedicated as open space for anyone to enjoy. There may be tourists using it during the hottest months of the year, but for the nicest months, it's mostly gonna be the residents. You'll forever be able to walk and ride your bike along the perimeter of the Marina at the edge of the water and everything is gonna be handicapped accessible. The thought of not having tourists here and then in turn, not having hospitality funds is a scary thought. Visitor funds are the reason Isle of Palms is one of the greatest and safest places to live in the country. We can afford two fire stations, a relatively large police force, a beautiful recreation center, and a Marina because of them. We have nice restaurants, grocery store, and fresh seafood on the island because of our visitors. A huge number of them use the Marina and its many services. The Marina is an important component of what makes Isle of Palms a great place to visit and to live. I will forever be grateful to the city of Isle of Palms for purchasing the Marina in 1999. There wouldn't be a Barrier Island Eko Tours anymore. It would, the public wouldn't have access. It's one of the greatest decisions the city government ever did and also believe one of the greatest decisions was to give Brian the 30-year lease managing the store, parking lot, and docks. I've heard people say giving Brian the 30-year lease is one of the worst decisions the city made, but this is about as far from the truth as can be. Brian has put his heart and soul into making the Marina a better place for the community, its current businesses, and the visitors. He's got a playground down there, park benches, a beautiful back deck. He's done a 360 with a store that used to look like a rundown gas station. It's well stocked. You see island residents down there all the time, people coming down there in their golf carts and families. And this is only gonna make it safe and more resident friendly. Most residents would agree the city did a great thing in 1999 by purchasing the Marina complex in order, and it's the reason why that is, in quotations, "in order to ensure public access to the water," not just island residents, "public access to the water." Down the road, this investment will also be viewed as one of the best things the city of the Isle of Palms ever did for itself. I can see it. In 10, 15 years from now, it's gonna be like a park down there. It's gonna be beautiful and people are gonna be, look back and say, "Why would we have voted against this?" The Marina Enhancement's only gonna draw in more locals, creating a park-like atmosphere that everyone in the community can enjoy. The residents of Isle of Palms will forever have a March Front Park and boat access, a pedestrian, biker, and golf cart friendly, adding value to your properties and community. I hope that the city council and the citizens of Isle of Palms will see that the positives for voting yes for the Marina well outweigh the negatives. The costs from the original purchase have never been a burden on the residents of Isle of Palms and there is no reason to think that it should in the future. One last thing I'd like to say is how heartbreaking it is to see the community divided. In the 30 years I've been here, I've never seen such nastiness between residents and the feeling that residents don't want to share the island with non-residents. Visitors from all over and locals from Mount Pleasant and surrounding communities who enjoy the island's beaches, its boat access, and businesses on the Isle of Palms for over 100 years. Wonderful memories have been formed over time for countless people. Isle of Palms is part of a much larger community and is a huge part of what makes living in the Charleston area great. It is sad to think that just because someone has the privilege to own a piece of property on the Isle of Palms that they think they're the only ones that get to enjoy it. From what I have witnessed, the current administration has made decisions in keeping what is best for its citizens as the priority. I hope that whomever becomes elected and whether the referendum gets passed or not, the community will come together.
Thank you.
Mr. Ziegler? Mr. Ziegler?
If you give it to Marie, then she'll make sure it's part of the minutes.
That's very much.
That helps her significantly.
Excuse me, Dick. Could I ask that the remarks of Mr. Ziegler be included in its entirety in the minutes, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
That's why she's got him. Alright, anyone else wish to address council at this time? Swim on up here. Oh, sorry about that.
Hi guys, my name is Troy Pucetiere. With SEAL Kids, I think a few of you might remember me from a few months ago. I stood here and asked you guys permission to let us host a fundraising event on the Isle of Palms. And tonight, I'm here just to say thank you. We had a great event, a great turnout, about 55 swimmers, no incidents. Everybody made it through, some faster than others. But I wanted to say thanks to each and every one of you guys, especially you, Mr. Mayor, and also Chief Graham. She did an amazing job helping us out. And at the end of the day, we were able to raise $65,000 to go to Word of SEAL Kids. So, I just thought I'd owe it to you guys to come back and say thank you. And I hope you let us have this event here next year, sir.
Well, that was my question. Do you think this is gonna be an annual thing? I mean, you carried, you yourself carried quite a burden to pull this together. Do you have the stamina to do it?
If I can get your permission right now, sir, yes, I will. But yes, that is my goal, is to make this an annual event. And we couldn't have done it without you guys, honestly. And all the volunteers, I had about 15 volunteers. The South Carolina National Guard came down and the junior ROTC from Wando came out and sang and they did colors. It was a really, really beautiful day. So, I just wanted to say thank you from SEAL Kids and from myself.
I feel bad you were delayed in the first schedule.
Right.
Nothing we could do about that.
If I could control the weather, I'd be a much wealthier guy.
Thank you, Troy.
But thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council at this moment?
One more.
Alright, hands up.
Hello, I'm Chris Crowley with Coastal Expeditions. I live in Olandale with my wife and our daughter Olivia. And I'd like to thank you all for hearing our comments. First of all, I'd like to support everything that Shane Ziegler said. Isle of Palms is lucky to have a native family like the Zieglers that live and work here and have carved out and do what they do. It's significant. I think they take like 12,000 schoolkids out a year or something like that. And that's important work. I think the most important, troubling questions of our time are answered by education. And that's what they do. It's also what Coastal Expeditions does. And we started offering tours for groups and families from the Isle of Palms Marina in 1992, when we were founded. And prior to that, I actually worked at a breach inlet in the Carroll Realty Building with a boating club. I don't know if you remember that. We were basically, we're pro the referendum for the rebuild of the Marina, for the renovation of the Marina. We think that, just like Shane said, the flow is something that needs to be worked out. And it seems like this plan is a much better flow. The docks are obviously, it's like anything, everything needs to be maintained. Be careful what you build because the cost of the build is the short run, the cost of the maintenance is the long run. And certainly, the docks need to be addressed. They've lasted longer than they were scheduled to last and it needs to look at. Sort of the anecdotal story of, remember your first surfboard? You know, that board was just great for you. You know, you would've gone around the world on that thing. But these days, that board just doesn't carry you like it used to, you know? It just doesn't seem to be quite as buoyant as it once was. And that's kind of the way I say that to say, the Isle of Palms Marina worked well for a time, you know? We are experiencing, as you all are aware, unprecedented time of growth. We're experiencing a need to continue to take a longer look at the way that we plan to facilitate things and the way that we plan to facilitate our residents and visitors. And that is, the Isle of Palms Marina now is like that old first surfboard. You know, it just needs to be a little bit newer board. Needs a little bit long, maybe a little longer and a little fatter. I also agree with Brian that Brian Barrigan has done a fantastic job at the Marina. The ship's store is unrecognizable as from what it used to be. I don't, it's just a completely different, it's not just a change of wallpaper, it's a change of culture. You know, it's just a completely different building. I understand he spent all of his own money on that. And that says a lot about his investment. And his management at the Marina has been consistent and consistently fair and well thought out. I think that he does a good job out there. I'm not a big lease guy. 30-year lease is interesting, but I suppose when you have that kind of capital invested, you need to, or to have the security to invest that kind of capital, you need to have the assurance of the kind of time it's gonna take to make it back. That's what I would think of as a lease. Coastal Expeditions would like to thank the council for representing us by our name on the new plan with moving us over a little bit from where we are and creating an independent floating dock that we can work from. And we'd really just, we really do hope that the referendum moves forward and that the maintenance issues and flow issues at the Marina are taken as a real priority. And I would just like to request some input on exactly how that dock and our access for our clients and the families of the Isle of Palms comes to pass. It's not rote, it's not stock, it's kind of special to the adventure of kayaking. The dock needs to be a little bit closer to the water. We've invested heavily in some racks that store boats near the water and just things like that. And I feel sure that if the referendum passes, that I'll be able to get in a discussion like that. But my, part of the, part of our current, like what I feel is our current dilemma is my lack, my personal lack of participation. Like you all have seen me before, but not as often as you should've, you know? So, I finally, I finally got, I didn't get, I missed the last meeting because I sort of didn't get the memo. It changed, I think. But I finally got the memo, which is to be an active member of the community of the Isle of Palms, you have to show up at the real property committee meetings and at the council meetings and maybe at the recreational committee meetings. I don't know. I was looking at the calendar today, forecasting my schedule out and carving out the time. So, here I am. This is what Coastal Expeditions looks like. It has been our life's work and it is a family business that we believe contributes to the culture of the community of our area, including the Isle of Palms. Lastly, and not to cover ground that's already been covered, but I think that Shane's last point was probably the most directed toward the division of the community as a whole. And I will say, I was born in Camden, South Carolina, about two hours away from the beach. And one of the highlights of my life was to go on vacation to the beach. And we would get, we'd have to drive two hours and we'd get to, we didn't come to the Isle of Palms. We were like Myrtle Beach or Litchfield or Garden City or somewhere back when it was no air conditioning and a screen door. And we did what we could. But it was, it changed my life, the exposure to our coast and the salt marsh and the sandy beaches. And as soon as I could, as soon as I had the wherewithal, I moved to Charleston in 1989 because I needed to be closer to the, why wouldn't you live at the beach all the time? But I say that to say this, not everybody gets to live at the beach. You know, but the beach, our beaches, these sandy beaches on these ephemeral ribbons of sand that we call Barrier Islands are sort of world heritage pieces, you know? It's not, the enjoyment of them is not endemic to the people who live on those islands. The enjoyment of them is sort of, should be available to the people, to that, to those fall line farm kids that have to wait for one week and have to drive two hours to get here. And I know y'all know that. But I just thought I'd say it out loud. These beaches of the Low Country have changed my life and they should be available to change other lives. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you, Chris. Others, anyone else want to speak to council? Going, going? Alright, let's move on to reports of standing committees. I'll report on the ways and means. September has come and gone. We're 25% of the way through the year. It feels a lot newer, you know? It just feels that much. Our expenditures are in line with budget. Instead of 25%, our expenditures are running at 23% of budget, which is as they were this time last year. Our general fund revenue is, frankly, revenue is down this time of year. We're only at 11% of budget. But we're 88% of prior year numbers and I expect that will pick up. We've received little or no property tax thus far this year. And that typically comes in when people start buying new cars and other things come after the storm season. So, all of you out there listening, buy a car, we'll start receiving some interest. Our cash balance on hand and we're receiving, I know Debbie said we were receiving 1.8, but we're actually receiving 1.08% interest at the LGIP, which is where we deposit our principal amount of cash balances. So, we're getting a little over 1% interest. That current balance is almost $2.8 million. This time last year, it was $2.4 million. Our total cash on hand from all accounts is currently sitting at $22.4 million, which is up from $15.5 million. But recognize that we have about $4.6 million more this year than we did last year from our beach stakeholders' fund. So, we're up a couple million dollars from where we were last year and still significant funds available at all of our cash balances. Our tourism funds, we received funding through September, $157,000 from municipal accommodations tax. So, we're running at 3% over prior year. We received nothing from the county or state that come through quarterly. We did book, actually, the first day of October, funds that should've been reflected in September. So, when we do this again next month, our September balance for funds received from our hospitality tax will show $80,842 received versus prior year of $77,000. So, again, we'll be up about, year-to-date, about 3% over where we were prior year. And the only other funds we have received, which are companion funds with our municipal accommodations taxes, our beach preservation fee, which again, is running at 3% over prior year, having received $157,000 last month. So, those are our current fund balances. Our project worksheets, there was no material change in the washdown contract for NPDES as far as incurred expenses. That is proceeding on at a glacier pace at this point. I guess they're not gonna finish in July. Our beach renourishment project is still on schedule, hasn't commenced, will commence later, hopefully by the end of the year, if not by the first of next year, and be complete on schedule. And the other project worksheet we have is the drainage project, 45th down the 52nd Avenue. That is all laid out and ready to break ground probably in the next week or two. If you go out there, it's all been surveyed, et cetera. So, that project is moving forward too. We heard from our treasurer that, she reported that our ATM contract, this has to do with the design work and all the other work with ATM, has constituted $176,000 in expenditures over the three years that we've been doing this. We went on to consider an award, sole source contract to civil site engineering, environmental, in the amount of $13,200 for an evaluation of drainage issues at 3232nd Avenue. I'll make that as a motion. Second. And seconded. This is to do some engineering work to understand the dynamics and the flows that are possible and that are affecting the properties in that area, having to do with both the storm water exiting the island as well as storm surges coming onto the island that are affecting the ditches, particularly at that address, but those in that entire ditch system. So, any other comments to be made? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Thank you. Consideration amendment to Thomas Hutton contract for a construction oversight of the NPDES vehicle washdown facility, amount not to exceed $10,000. I'll make that as a motion?
Second.
Motion seconded. This is their oversight, since the contract is running longer, they provide us justification for the additional expense since they're having to oversight the contract longer than we anticipated. So, motion seconded. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, carries. Third item was amending of Edie's contract to increase the frequency of the ditch maintenance. And somebody's gonna hand me a piece of paper so I can read it properly.
Bear with me just a minute.
Or maybe I'll, did I pick it up?
Yes.
Alright, see, this is good enough.
Oh, good. That's it. That's perfect.
So, this is a case where we contract typically with Edie's and they're working under a five-year contract with us now. And this is a motion to move, to amend the five-year drainage maintenance contract with Edie's to increase year three, the current year that we're in now, from $88,150 to $198,288. And to increase year four and year five, year four being increased for FY '19 from $80,100 to $187,038. And for year five, which would be FY '20, from $88,400 to $184,38. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Seconded. This is, purpose of this is to change the regimen of cleaning, in particular of the ditch system that we have that Edie cleans for us. They do it once a year. They do other pumpouts and other matters as well. But this will be increasing the ditch frequency from once a year to three times a year, spring, summer, and fall, for lack of lack of a better term, for cleaning the debris and the vegetation from the debris system, uh, from the, uh, from the ditch system so that when we do have water conditions, the water will flow more freely and, uh, and exit the island more rapidly. We can't keep it from falling, but we can get rid of it sooner. So this has been something that's been well thought out, so. And in addition, uh, they're adding the fact that they have to now take the debris off the island. They used to be able to deposit it here on the island, but now it has to be taken off to a landfill. And in addition, they're going to be pumping out, cleaning the drains, the pipes that we have on the 53rd to 57th Avenue, something that needs to be done that wasn't previously included in their contract, so. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, here come the ditches. This is a consideration of a retroactive engagement of McKay, Kitty, and Associates in the amount of $23,000 for an audit for the current year. This is an item that we thought we had secured a contract with our auditors for a period of four years. And in fact, when we reviewed the minutes from prior meetings last year, we had only actually committed to contract with them for one. They had bid for four, and so this is cleaning up our housework to, uh, to go ahead and commit to do the entire four-year audit, in particular the audit they have just concluded.
Like there's a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
It's seconded, excellent. So, any further discussion on the audit? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Also in your packet, uh, series of items we're reporting on, this, these are reported purchases in the less, less than $25,000 that were in our budget. I'll just read them so everybody in the listening audience can understand. First item is emergency work by Edie's Construction for post Irma cleaning and vacuuming of storm drains in the amount of $24,122.50. Award of a contract to Parkion, did I say that right? For annual maintenance on 16 parking kiosks in the amount of $11,023.60. And the award of a contract to L3 Mobile Vision Inc. for the replacement of three in-car cameras for patrol vehicles in the amount of $16,162,70. And the award of a contract to Huber and Associates for Interpol licensing and annual maintenance in the amount of $10,167. Any cents? No cents, okay. And the award of a contract to Software One Inc. for Microsoft Office 365 licensing, software and email, software for all city users in the amount of $13,910.40. That has all transpired and that is the report from our Ways and Means Committee. So, any questions?
I have one question.
What is Interpol licensed? It just sounds so James Bond.
It is.
It is. And this is not anything new. It's something that we re-up every year. I don't know if we have anybody from the police department that can explain it, but...
Okay, well, they can get to me.
Yeah.
They, they got all your information already.
Mr. Chairman? I think Interpol has your information there, yes. Let's get it straight.
I have a question, Dan.
Mr. Chairman, um, given that we're about to start the World Series, this may be unprecedented, but items one through five on our agenda, I believe you just batted a thousand percent. With all unanimous votes, congratulations. Um, I want to ask you a question, given that you're a person that seems to focus on the technical. Our treasurer earlier this evening said that our budget, financial position is the best that it's been in eight years. Do you concur?
Yes, our, our fund balances have increased every year for the last eight years.
Thank you. And as a follow-up to that, you neglected to mention one thing in your report, and I think that has something to do with a State Department of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism that you may want to mention now.
Oh, man. Well, for all those in attendance, in the beach restoration project that we have ongoing, there are different stakeholders and, um, stakeholders are those that are providing funds, so just to get that clarified. One of the funding agencies is South Carolina Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. They, city administrator, et cetera, appeal to them to, couldn't they come forward and pay up early so we have the funds on hand before the project starts so we don't have to chase after the facts to get reimbursed? And they concurred and have cut us a check for $2.9 million. There's some change in there and I can't remember what it was, but they sent us a check for $2.9 million, I think it was last week, right? Came in the mail, simple little check, yeah, 2.9 with a lot of zeros. Yeah, yeah. There were a lot of people nervous trying to hold that and they probably never held it, a check worth $2.9 million. And it was immediately deposited, correct? And so the funds are in the bank and awaiting the execution of that contract, so thank you for reminding me. That was, that was a good, that'll help us significantly on the consternation as the project goes forward, making sure the cash flow works adequately. We have a similar request in with the FEMA funds that would be coming out of the State Emergency Management Division.
Yeah, and the ball's in our court on that. They requested some additional information and we're working on providing it.
So it is quite conceivable we'll have those two funding sources in hand before the project really commences.
So y'all keeping up the World Series? Ball's in our court now?
Mmm. LA is getting our temperature. It's 100, 100 degrees out there right now. Anyhow, enough weather forecasts. Public safety, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Monday, October 9th. We, after old business, we discussed efforts to remove the encroachments from the rightways. With the tourist season over, officers again have had time to address this issue and 16 additional letters have been sent out. Of residents previously notified, 20 encroachments have been removed, 12 have been partially removed, and the remainder out of compliance. Update on clearing overgrown lots. Chief Buchanan reported they identified 24 overgrown lots on the island. Of that number, 18 have been cleared and the, and six lots were newly added to that list. We talked about the update on banning balloons from the beach, and that was a good time to thank Chief Graham. She's been out of town in Puerto Rico, working relief down there. She was gone for a month. Thank you for your service to us and, and to the whole United States and particularly Puerto Rico. But since she's back. You know, I'm, I'm going to ask you to kind of go from disaster relief to looking at balloons.
Different type of disaster.
The chief is very flexible here. Thank you, chief, again. Update on parking at the rec center. All the vehicles have been removed, including the backhoe. And thank you to the rec department. They have relined all those spaces and numbered them, so we'll be able to better track how long a vehicle has been there. We have no new business. I'll give you a brief synopsis of the departmental reports. Battalion Chief Smith did the fire department, responded to a brush fire on the Sullivan's Island side of breach inlet, was readily taken care of. They responded to a boat that had impacted the Isle of Palms connector, broke loose during the storm. Had a report of a fire structure on Sparrow Drive. And the Isle of Palms personnel were assisted by, and assisted by is maybe the wrong word to use, but we had on the island prior to the storm, the Pine Ridge Department's high-water vehicle, which was used to access that location. So here's, here's an example of us, us and other communities sharing with us. I understand that it worked very well. Personnel responded to 108 calls during the month, 33 of those were EMS calls. EMS response times were within line of what they should be. Didn't get a lot of inspections done because of the hurricane, so that, those will pick up again next month. And the same with training. Work for the, that's authorized, the 95-foot ladder truck had been delayed as they wait for a part boat to arrive. And I'm hoping that is either here or will be here soon. In addition to normal station tours, personnel assisted residents to prepare for and recover from Hurricane Irma. And they also provided to the committee activity logs that were associated with the hurricane. Councilmember Carroll asked whether the department could use a house to be torn down for training purposes, and I'm hoping it was not his house.
It's hard to tell.
And they, Battalion Chief Hathaway said they could possibly use it if they were going to have to look at it first to see if it would meet their, their training needs. Then we moved over to the police department, which Chief Buchanan reported on. On September 4th, they responded to a burglary in progress, found seven individuals in the home that were not authorized to be there. They were all arrested, three were underage and released to their parents. The others got to go to see the Alcannon Hotel in Charleston. Responding to a vehicle stop for equipment violation. It always gets me that these people that have illegal substances in the car also have equipment that's not working right, so they're going to get stopped. And then the police find out you've got marijuana, you've got cocaine, you've got a stolen revolver in the car. So that was, that was taken care of. In addition to credit cards and other documents. The chief recognized all the department's personnel who worked during Hurricane Irma. And I'd like to thank police, fire, public works, recreation, the whole city team for, for what they did during the hurricane. Over the course of September, communications specialists answered 5,016 calls, of which 4,686 were the, for the police department. Officers made 341 traffic stops, which resulted in 71 tickets, and they wrote 142 reports. Animal control issued five citations, in addition to securing 19 animals, 13 dogs and two cats. Don't know, I think the others were birds. There were 10 livability calls that were answered, six received warnings, and four received citations. There were 15 coyote sightings. We caught our first coyote. Those are, I would say that's...
Does that mean there's 14 more to go?
Derek, we know there are more out there, but they are...
I saw one today.
I don't, I don't know if Sullivan's Islands has ever captured one, but, but we've got our, 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 we need to put a decal of the coyote on the animal control truck. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Taxidermy.
I'm sorry, our next meeting is 2:00, November 6th.
Very good. Questions for public safety?
One question. The parking on, you know, the rec center?
27.
That is public parking, correct?
Yes.
Which means that they can park there for a certain length of time and then they have to move or... My question goes to, the chief and his staff are going to have to be going by there every day or every other day because now we have a boat and a trailer back and we have a business trailer back. But can we not add to the rec center sign there and just put no overnight parking? Does that have to go through bells and whistles with SED? We own that, that road, right? That's one of ours, right?
So you would need to change the ordinance so that it said no overnight parking in that area? And then when we posted it, it could be enforced. If we just put up a sign, there's going to be no enforcement to go with it unless there's an ordinance to back it up.
And that goes through public safety first to look at an ordinance of that type? Because my fear is the chief and his staff are going to be doing this constantly. I mean, and I, I understand that, that as long as they don't stay there for a certain length of time, they can move it to the very next slot and stay there for a certain length of time. So it's just going to be like moving dominoes. And I hate for the chief and his staff to have to be looking at, at that as a problem.
We wouldn't ignore it, so we will put that on our agenda for public safety. I would encourage any citizen that thinks that they see something that's out of order to please call the police hotline, which is 886-6522. I see a lot of things on the internet, I see a lot of things on Facebook, people are talking back and forth, and, and part of the problem is the city is never notified. So if they could call us direct, it would, it would really expedite things happening.
Good point. Excellent. Okay, any other questions? Public safety? Let's go into public works.
Public works. We had a very long meeting, so I'm going to try to zip through this as quickly as I possibly can so that we're not here that long. Regular meeting was October 4th at 11:00. We had a forum present. Councilmember Ward moved to approve the minutes, passed unanimously. We then went to department reports, and you can find all the details of that report in the minutes. The August highlight was emergency street sweeping with the use of Charleston County and also emergency drain work that was provided by Edie's. September, the highlight was preparation for pump and maintenance during and after the cleanup after Hurricane Irma. I'm not going to go into all the tonnage, but there were tons and tons of, of garbage and what we call CD waste or white goods that were picked up after the storm. Charleston County again assisted with extra street swimming, sweeping after the storm and assisted Edie's with vacuuming ditches. Kudos go to the park, um, public works department for their tireless work during, before, during, and after the storm and getting things cleaned up as quickly as possible. We know it's a daunting and thankless job and we, we thank Donnie and his, his staff for all that. Moving on, we discussed the prospective buyer for the Shop Enterprises. This is something that will have to come before council in actually assigning that contract to the new owners. It's very early in the discussions, they don't even have a contract as yet, but Scott Edie did come to the meeting and allow us to ask some pertinent questions so that we could move on that. We then went to an update of the NPDES project with timeline and costs, um, and also consideration of amendment to the Thomas and Hutton agreement we've already discussed and passed on this, so we don't have to go into that. We then moved on to an update on the city compactor, which is located by the Dinghy. And it continues to be a challenge for the city and for the businesses. According to Mr. Jones at the Dinghy, the flies continue to be bad and the rat population is down by half and the, the stench is considerably better. Director Kerr stated that cameras have been installed, but were not actual functional at the time. And this is a situation that becomes fluid and changes overnight. So one day it looks really good, you go the next day and you have a compound of people that have left their debris there that shouldn't be there, but the city is constantly working on it. We then had an update on phase two drainage. Piping is expected to be in. Linda, I expect that that's already happened since that was...
Well, it actually hasn't, but we have made significant progress and probably we'll see some work going on. The work starts at the Outfall, which is basically around the Morgan Creek area of the marina. All the survey marks are there and everything, and the actual construction will begin at that location. So they'll work from there back to the collection area.
Okay, and then again with the update on the replacement of... Okay, and then again with the update on the replacement of the underground storage tanks, has that RFP gone out?
I think that's gonna be reported on in real property.
Correct. Okay, excuse me. Okay, then we'll, we'll move on from there. Consideration of future personnel requirements and changes in public works. Now, we have piled on and piled on and piled on, Donnie and his staff, about as much garbage as they can handle. So the time is, has come for us to really look at public works and the personnel that are there now, what needs to be in the future. But this is a study that needs to be done by an outside source. I think we need to bring in a consultant that can help us look at where we are, where we need to be, and what the personnel issues are, what the job descriptions need to be, and hopefully in our visioning and our budget process, we could start that process. It's not gonna be something that can happen overnight, but I think that we all agree that we cannot continue with the staff that we have and the increase in the responsibilities that we've put on them. So hopefully in our discussions, we will be able to look at that. We then went to a discussion of long and short-term solutions related to drainage, and so we've covered that already in Ways and Means and Council. In addition to that, the Planning Commission is looking at it as a, a global issue rather than just, you know, individual residents and, and their positions. So we've already covered that. And I realize I'm going through this very quickly, but everything is in the minutes if you want the details. We then looked at consideration of a proposal from the Greenery in the amount of five thousand three hundred and eighty dollars for additional irrigation repairs along Front Beach. Staff recommends that the proposal be approved so that they can be working on anticipation of fall landings. The motion was voted on and passed unanimously. Our next meeting date is Wednesday, November first at eleven a.m. So goes my report.
Okay, thank you. I wanna echo what you've said about the storm prep and what the public works personnel, the fire, and police did. People don't realize what it takes to, to be ready for a storm and then execute the recovery. The public works personnel, fire personnel, et cetera, leave their homes, stay in the motel across, they don't stay on the island here, because the island may not be available. So we stay across the island, across the connector at a hotel, giving up their homes so that they can be at work immediately after the storm allows us to, to recover. So kudos to all those folks that, you know, were giving up of their own personal possessions, per se, by not being home, taking care of their own property. They were given time to do that before they came, hopefully adequately. But it's a major commitment, staff, Linda, every department head attends emergency management preparation meetings with the county every day, every day at noon, for at least an hour to understand what everybody's doing, so we're coordinated within the county, and that if we need resources from Charleston County, those become available to us. Or if we have a resource that others might need, the amount of sandbagging that was done this time was exceptional. I don't know how many sandbags were made available and how much sand was consumed, but, you know, if it all made its way to the beach, would it be a hell of a lot better off? But, you know, it, it takes a lot of coordination, administrator stays on top of it, every department head is deeply involved, and it's, it's, I won't call it poetry in motion, that's a little over the top, but it's good when it comes together, so I hope everybody appreciates that. So thank you. All right, let's move on to the rec committee.
Question or comment? There's something in the minutes about the future personnel requirements, and it had nothing to do with the Personnel Committee being canceled, because we did not have anything to discuss, and we would've been expending staff's time had we had a Personnel Committee meeting. I think what Councilmember Friend said is correct, that they need to, Public Works Department needs to get someone to come in and do a study. Once that study has been done, and all the facts presented, and they determine which way they wanna go with the results of that study, that then in turn would come to Personnel Committee, would be looked at by Personnel Committee, either approved or rejected, and I, I know, Donnie, I know you need those people. Then it would go to Ways and Means, and then it would come to council. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew the process that we go through. Thank you.
Okay. Rec.
Okay. The Recreation Committee met on Wednesday, October eleventh at nine a.m. We had Councilman Kinghorn and I, and then Councilman Carroll joined us sort of halfway through, but first thing we did was departmental reports for September twenty-seventeen, and Director Page let us know that all adult athletics have started back up in September, and we have a very healthy number of participants for each, and, and youth soccer is in full bloom, you know, everything is rolling there in a big way. We started some new programs, mommy and me music, toddler talk, and some other language development programs, which is exciting, some sort of preschool-type programs. We, teenagers is back in action, they had thirty people attending in September, so that's good. Our employee wellness program continues to be a very successful program, lots of good participation there, and then just in general, all of our fitness programs are, are rolling right along and doing very well. The, I do wanna say our, our wellness program we had at the recreation center was just great and so well-attended, and I know they even ran out of flu shots for one age group, there were so many people in line, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful program, and I encourage people to come to that in September. There's a lot of good information, you can get blood work done, it's, it's just, it's a great, great thing, and I hope we continue to do that, I think it works really well. We then did talk about parking at the recreation center, which we've already talked about, so I just don't really think we need to go back through that. We really, we did discuss, which I thought was interesting, you know, when is it completely impossible to park at the recreation center? And we determined it's really only one day a year, which is the Easter egg time. So otherwise, there is adequate parking. A lot of people don't park along Twenty-seventh like they, they could and should, they all wanna park at Twenty-eighth, you know, it just is that going to the heart of the rec center, so somehow really we need to encourage more people to park along Twenty-seventh for soccer and baseball, softball, that sort of thing. So we talked about, in our new business, we talked about national youth sports recommendations, so we went through this, there are different requirements for different, and different guidelines for different programs, and we asked the Director Page just to check and see if she's meeting all the guidelines that, that need to be met, which is South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association. Then we talked about innovative and creative ideas for programming. This is something that we just kinda wanna throw out there to the public, if y'all have any ideas, you, different things you'd like to see offered at the rec center, please let us know. I mean, you know, it could be some of the things we threw out there, you know, from meditation to wood carving to outdoor yoga, there's, we have put in a new walking trail along that goes along the periphery of the rec center, so that's really a great thing, maybe having some stations of that, you know, where you do different exercises, but, but let us know. And then we did talk about upcoming events, which there's lots of them. Next week is Ghostly Tighetales.
This week.
This week.
Wow, I mean Halloween is here, right?
Friday.
Hence the pink pumpkins, right? So yes, Ghostly Tighetales is Friday, then we have the Halloween carnival on Halloween on the thirty-first, which is Tuesday. Our street festival for the holidays is December second, and anyway, it's just a very, very busy time, so. And then last thing is we had a, a request to name the soccer fields after a gentleman who tragically passed away from cancer. So we discussed naming things, and, and we decided that that really wasn't something that we felt comfortable doing. You know, it's sad and it's tragic and, but-
Move on.
Okay. So that's, I think what we're gonna, we, we encourage people to do the bricks at Front Beach or something of that nature. And we adjourned, and our next meeting is Wednesday, January tenth. That's it.
Thank you very much. To follow up on what you said, bricks are still available at Front Beach.
Yes.
You can still have a name, an organization, whatever, buy a brick, and annually we get them installed in someplace, and you can be told where it is, et cetera, so if you wanna-
Just in time for Christmas.
If you wanna memorialize a new birth or somebody who has passed, that's an opportunity for you to have a permanent record here on the island.
Two things before we leave rec. The movie Chasing Coral was screened at the recs, and so I just wanna throw it out there for anyone who might be watching or who's in the audience. If you've not seen that, it is definitely worthy to watch, and certainly very in keeping with the missions of some of you in the audience that have already spoken in terms of environmental aspects and things.
Yes, thank you.
It was a very good program. The other thing I want to mention is that the city was notified that it did receive funding for connecting the sidewalk at the rec center to the sidewalk on Palm Boulevard. And it's very serendipitous that one of our own has the contract for that construction, Rhett Rodenbach, so longtime island resident, grown up over here, gone to school, and now he will be helping us. The city will be sending out letters, the surveyors should get started with the survey work probably in another week. We'll be sending out letters to residence, letting them know. It will, the sidewalk is proposed for the western side of the street. So that's the side without the ditch.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for rec? Nothing. All right, excellent. Personnel committee had no meeting, but has some awards to make.
Yes, plus, in terms of personnel, we have still one part-time animal control officer that we're looking, a position that we're looking to fill, and one full-time parks and facilities specialist for the recreation department. As far as the September's safety sweep states winners in recreation department was Andy Sinwald, fire was Ashawn Hogan, and the police department Jane Stewart, and public works was Charles Williams. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Okay. All right, real property.
Just to go back to Chasing Coral, that is available on Netflix, and it's definitely, should be must-watch for anyone who lives near the ocean. Okay, the real property committee met on October ninth with all members present. We had an update on the public restrooms and boardwalk. The city is going out for bid on this project for a second time. The staff is hopeful that with more bids and more accurate bids will be received. When we rebid, the RFP was constructed to enable the city to proceed with only the boardwalk construction if we chose to do that. Douglas Carr stated that the flood maps will have changes by the end of two thousand eighteen, and although not fully explored, the restrooms will go from a V-zone to an AO-zone, which would mean we would not fall under the fifty percent rule when redoing the building. So we've made many improvements to the building, and I think we, the thinking is we can wait and get the boardwalk done first. Bid opening for that will be November third on Friday. Update on beach renourishment, mobilization is expected in December with permits in place and the contract's been executed. The emergency burn work is nearly complete, the machinery is at Fifth Avenue now and should be off the beach by Thursday, and it'll be moving back up to Beechwood East. The work there should take another additional day to complete. An update on the underground storage tanks, due to some changes made by the city attorney, the RFP will be delayed by approximately two weeks, putting more details and specifications, additional environment insurance requirements is what we're doing. The RFP will go out the first week of November, and we should have bids back by the end of November. It's such a short meeting, all the current tenants' rents are current, and our next meeting is November sixth.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Any questions for real property?
One quick question. So the underground storage tanks are no disparate public, how much are those costing?
I have no idea.
We don't know until the bids come in, but it's, I can tell you what's in the budget.
Right, and that's not part of the fifteen-point-five million? So it's clarifying our cost.
Fifteen-point-five?
I'm talking about five-point-five million, our reference, but it's not, it's not part of that process.
This is tanks right here and the tanks at the Marina.
Yes, I understand, I'm just clarifying that, thank you.
Okay. No other questions for real property? You have in your possession, uh, Planning Commission meetings, was included in your, your minutes. You saw, during the Planning Commission, they had a presentation from Wild Dooms dealing with the traffic flow, dealing with the new hotel. I've had a request to ask them to come forward and meet with council and give the same presentation. Obviously, they're not here tonight, they're not, they weren't available, but we're still working, trying to find a compatible, where they can come forward and share with us the same information they shared with planning. It'll be worthwhile for everybody to hear. Now, the committee reports go up to bills already in your possession. Make a motion for second reading of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash oh-six, an ordinance authorizing, authorizing the city administrator of the City of Alapams to execute the necessary documents to enter into that certain second amendment to the commercial lease between the City of Alapams and Barrier Islands LLC, attached heretofore as exhibit one and incorporated herein by reference, and to suspend the reading of the entire ordinance change.
Second.
Motion seconded. Discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One no. Okay. Next item on our agenda is second reading of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash oh-seven. I'm going to request that we defer this, we have some amendments to be made, but before we can ever have a second reading, we'll have to have a public hearing. And so that had not been scheduled, so we're going to schedule a public hearing and then move on at a later date, probably next month, to, to have the second reading. Okay? And there'll be some amendments coming forward.
Well, we need to amend first reading.
Do we need to amend it formally? Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to amend first reading, and first reading will, amendment is only to include in the last statement, right, in the last statement, where it says to provide for a minimum elevation for residential and non-residential construction. So we're adding the term and non-residential construction to the first reading. I'll make that as amendment as a motion?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion on, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now we have an amended first reading that will now go for public hearing.
Correct.
Okay. Keep us straight. New bills, first reading by title-only ordinance two thousand seventeen dash oh-eight, an ordinance amending Title Five, Planning and Development, Chapter Five, Land Development Regulates City of Alapams Code of Ordinance to Require That All Subdivisions of Lots Be Connected to the Public Sewer System and To Require Certain Information Related to Sewer Connections For The Subdivisions, For That Subdivision Approval Process. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Seconded.
I just want to mention for all of these ordinances that relate to councils and the planning's commission's sort of mission to promote having residences connected to the public sewer and having fewer and fewer septic tanks and grinder pumps, we did receive some input from the Alapams Water and Sewer Commission today, which should not stop first reading on any of these, but they, they may have some changes that they would suggest to us to be incorporated into the second reading versions. So just so you're aware of that on, on all of these- So just so you're aware of that on, on all of these ordinances related to that subject now.
And much of what they're likely to say has to do with definitions of what's public sewer versus gravity feed, grinder pumps, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll, we'll get that all cleared up with them. That'll be good information. So all in favor of first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next two will follow in like fashion. Motion for first reading by Title Only Ordinance 2017-9, Planning Development, City of Alapams, that all construction is substantial improvements shall be connected to a public sewer system where the public sewer line is located within 150 feet and to reduce the lot coverage requirements and floor area requirements for lots with septic systems. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Please.
Substantial. Is there a dollar amount? Are we talking a percentage?
Fifty.
Fifty percent. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First reading by Title Only Ordinance 17-10, Ordinance Amending Title VI, Health and Sanitation, Chapter I, General Provisions To Deduce Sewage And Disposal Systems, City of Alapams Code Of Ordinance To Require Mandatory Connection To The Public Sewer System Where Public Sewer Line Is Available Upon The Sale Or Transfer Of Property. Make that as a motion. Go have a second.
Second.
All right. Again, we're gonna get some information and clarification from the Water and Sewer Commission.
What is it saying now?
I know.
This is, well, have you read the detail?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it says just that, if the public sewer line is available when you sell or transfer your property...
How about you transfer it within the family to an estate?
It does not apply to the transfer of inheritance.
So it's just sell to unrelated third parties?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. We can, we can develop other answers if you have questions this week.
Yeah, 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 it's first reading.
Move on. That's the first reading. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. On your agenda, we're gonna consider a date for first, for visioning meetings. I'm, I'm looking at the first week of December, so if, if you have dates that are not available to you for that period of time, just get back to us at some point. Okay? And I wanna remind everybody that the farmer's market is still up and alive and doing well. This is the last one. That doesn't mean they're gonna have a sale. However, you know, you know, give it your best shot. Maybe you can negotiate. All right.
We'll have a bouncy house for kids.
They're gonna have a bouncy house for kids? Well, define a kid.
You can go.
I can, all right. No other business?
Are we not having an event this Saturday coming up on the beach?
You're talking about Ghostly Tithails?
Yes.
That is Friday night and it said, it said access 25.
I just wanna make sure everybody knows that it's a cool event.
Carol already covered it. But if you wanna go Saturday, I mean, you can have your own.
I mean, you left over it down there.
All right. All right, no. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're outta here. Thank you all. It's been riveting, I know.